It started at six o'clock. And this is the Montrose City Council regularly scheduled city council meeting. It's Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'm calling the meeting to order. If you could all join me and rise as we say the pledge of allegiance.
I part with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where justice stands, one nation, and for our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can you please take a roll?
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glaspel.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move straight to our proclamation for this evening. And if Lisa Paris with the Community Foundation will join me up front. And it looks like I didn't sign this card. I'm not sure. Hang on a second. I'm going to sign it so it's official. Thanks for being here tonight. This is a proclamation for Colorado Gives and Compadre Gives, which runs from November first to December fifth of two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas, November first, two thousand and twenty-three begins the annual month-long Giving Campaign for Colorado Gives Day, which is December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, a statewide day to promote and support our nonprofit resources. And whereas, the Colorado Gives Day campaign encourages philanthropy and generosity for the nonprofits whose services we benefit from as a community. And whereas, through the efforts of the Colorado Give three sixty-five and their regional champion, UnCompadre Gives of the Montrose Community Foundation, donors are driven to support local, participating nonprofits of URA, Delta, and Montrose Counties. And whereas, the Montrose Community Foundation, a nonprofit charitable partner for over thirty years, envisions a healthy and vibrant community for all the UnCompadre Valley. And whereas, our area nonprofits accomplish this through our communities' generosity. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November first through December fifth as UnCompadre Gives for Colorado Gives Day in the City of Montrose, to encourage the members of this community to be aware of the good our local nonprofits do for the health of our community and to find it in their hearts to give back and support their favorite local causes. Thank you. Yeah.
On behalf of the Montrose, excuse me, Community Foundation, I want to thank the city council members and Barbara for making the community aware of this important campaign. And also, I want to thank the City of Montrose for your constant support for all of our nonprofits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda tonight is a call for public comment for non-agenda items. So if you want to speak to something on the agenda, hold that comment until we get there. But if anyone has any comments for an item that isn't on the agenda, this would be the time. I don't see any, so we'll keep going. Item seven is approval of the minutes from the November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three special city council meeting and the November seventh regular city council meeting. Could I please have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Get a motion?
Second.
And if you could all please look to your computers to vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is the Historic Preservation Commission appointments. This is council consideration of the following applicants: Darlene Mora, John Elo, Ken Huff, Kent Kinsey, Marlene Gravitz, and Peg Evannoica.
Evannoica.
Thank you, Evannoica. I know I was getting it really wrong. Evannoica. For three vacant positions on the Historic Preservation Commission, we had the opportunity to hear from most of these applicants and the opportunity to look over all of their applications in making appointments to three of the seats. Council, does anyone have a motion for appointing one or all three of these people to those seats?
Madam Mayor, I would move to appoint Darlene Mora, John Elo, and Ken Huff.
Second.
Okay, we have a first for those three candidates and a second, so please vote. While that tabulates, I want to thank all of our applicants. We were really impressed with everyone, and we do have three incumbents who are all doing a great job. And so I think that is probably why we are looking at reappointing those three applicants to the seat. But I want to, on behalf of council, encourage everyone who applied to keep your eyes open for any possible upcoming vacancies or future appointments, because we really enjoyed meeting all of the applicants and seeing their applications. Okay, next up on the agenda is item nine, which is Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-six. And I am going to step out for this one because I have a conflict of interest, and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Protem Reed to lead the action on this item.
As the mayor said, this is the city council consideration of Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-six, a resolution of intent to create the Otter Pond Circle Utility Relocation Special Improvement District. This was a subject of discussion at last week's work session, and I believe that City Attorney Chris Dowsey is with us via Zoom to lead us in this discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Can everyone hear me just fine?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, thank you again. What is before city council is a resolution of intent to create the Otter Pond Circle Utility Relocation Special Improvement District. This is a procedural resolution required by the code in order to create a special improvement district or an SID. As you stated, this was discussed at the November sixth work session, and the Otter Pond dam has failed. The Otter Pond HOA, who is the owner of the dam, has requested that the city assist in setting up this SID. There are eighty-five lots within the HOA, and of these eighty-five lots, seventy-six have signed a petition in order to create this SID. What the SID does is have the city upfront the cost of the debt and utility relocation and have the lots within the Otter Pond HOA pay their pro-rata share back to the city. The residents of the HOA have the option to either pay their portion upfront as a lump sum payment, or they're able to pay in up to twenty installments annually with a four percent interest accruing annually on the unpaid principal. Even if the owner has not signed the petition, so the nine lots who have not signed, they're still going to be responsible for their pro-rata share. As I stated before, this resolution does not actually create the SID, so it is procedural in nature to show council's intent to create it. And there will be a first reading of an ordinance to actually create the SID coming at the next scheduled council meeting. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, any public comment?
Good evening, City Council. I'm Christina Files. I live in Otter Pond. I'm the HOA president. I just wanted to thank you guys again for considering this SID. It'll have a huge and positive impact for our neighborhood. If you have any questions, please let me know, but thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no further questions from council, no further public comment, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-six as presented.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. The vote is unanimous for the adoption of the resolution.
Okay, moving on, we're on item ten, which is the two thousand and twenty-four budget approval. There's two pieces to this budget approval. They may not both be on the electronic voting system, so we'll see what pops up, but regardless of that, we are taking two votes. One is Ordinance twenty-six forty-five on second reading, and that's council consideration of an ordinance providing and appropriating funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year that begins January first, two thousand and twenty-four. Our finance director, Shani Wittenberg, is here. I will turn it over to her, and then we'll have both the second reading of an ordinance and we'll also have a resolution to vote on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is second reading of Ordinance twenty-six forty-five. We had an open house on October seventeenth. I also reviewed the budget with you in a presentation last week at first reading. It has not changed between readings, so it's your pleasure. You can go ahead and vote, or if you would like to ask questions or if we need to discuss it further, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Thank you very much. I know Mr. Yuliberry wanted to make a comment.
Madam Mayor, at the last meeting, I voted no on the budget. I didn't quite understand where funds that were going to the URA were coming from. I thought they were coming from the budget. But after meeting with the city manager and as well as the finance director, I realized that those funds are actually coming from within the money themselves, but the city has to budget, and they have to put it on their budget for the years that they're going to use that funds. And so, to be honest, at this time, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve the budget.
Thank you very much. Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if so, that would be for the ordinance that you're recommending we approve the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second that.
Okay, so please vote on the ordinance, and then we'll do a voice call for the resolution, which will be a separate vote. And the ordinance for the budget passes unanimously, and then that takes us on to the resolution. And this is council consideration of Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-five, adopting the two thousand and twenty-four municipal budget. Can we have a motion for this?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, public comment. Thank you. I got thrown off by the two different votes, but public comment on adopting the resolution for the municipal budget. Seeing none.
Now I will make a motion to adopt.
Did you say two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-five?
I said two thousand and twenty-two because that was written in the text.
I was going to say two thousand and twenty-two.
Sorry.
No, thank you. I'm going to amend that, too. It is Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Yes.
We don't get a lot of typos in our agenda, so kudos to our city clerk's office. They usually do such a good job that I trust that if it's on there, it's right and I'm wrong.
Mine was correct.
Really?
Yeah.
That's crazy. Look at that.
Just one.
Just my copy. Okay.
Now I will make a motion.
Please do.
To adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It looks like we were able to pull up an electronic vote on this as well, so please go ahead and use your computer to vote electronically. Okay, so with little confusion this week, except for mine, we are able to pass the budget unanimously. Fantastic. Okay, moving on to item eleven, Ordinance twenty-six fifty-one on first reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance appropriating, well, amending Ordinance twenty-five ninety-nine, which appropriated funds for the defraying of the expenses and liabilities of the City of Montrose during the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-three, set expenditures of the City of Montrose over and above those anticipated at the time of adoption of the original budget for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm going to turn it over to our finance director, Shani Wittenberg, to tell you what that means, because that is a very formal way of saying, and can you put it in plain English for everyone?
Okay, I'll do my best. So yes, this is a supplemental budget for two thousand and twenty-three, so the current year, for items that have come up since the adoption of the original ordinance, twenty-five ninety-nine. All items that are being supplemented have come to you during the year for approval. So there's nothing in this budget that is, has not already been approved. This is just a formal way of saying our budget for two thousand and twenty-three is going to be increased by this amount, and that covers all those extra things that we might have purchased or something we might have participated in that we didn't anticipate during the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Does that help?
I think that's a great way to explain.
This is something that we do every year. This isn't something that, it's like the only time we've ever done this.
Correct.
Did you have a clarification as well?
No, that will cover it.
Okay, fantastic.
Sorry, David, I couldn't see you over there.
I know. You both were like, let's explain this. Okay, so we'll go ahead and hold a hearing. Is there any public comment for city council's adoption on first reading of the ordinance approving the supplemental budget for this year? I do not see any public comment, so I'll close the hearing and would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance twenty-six fifty-one on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. And that passes unanimously. Moving on then to item twelve, which is Ordinance twenty-six fifty-two on first reading. City council consideration of Ordinance twenty-six fifty-two on first reading and ordinance of the City of Montrose, updating Title I, Chapter fourteen of the Official Code of the City of Montrose, Colorado, amending Title I, Chapter fourteen, Section two, one dash fourteen dash two, regarding rules of procedure, amending Title I, Chapter fourteen, Section four, one dash one, four dash four, regarding sentencing, amending Title I, Chapter fourteen, Section five, one dash fourteen dash five, regarding enforcement of fines, and repealing and replacing other code provisions to standardize cross-references in the Official Code of the City of Montrose regarding sentencing. And I think we have both our city attorney, Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro, and our municipal court judge, Aaron Maxwell, here, or virtually, or maybe just our Assistant City Attorney.
I think you just had me tonight.
Okay, we just have you. Well, we'll take it, and you can explain to us and to everyone listening what all these updates and cross-references mean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of city council. I'm hearing a proposal to update the municipal code relating to the court rules of procedure and sentencing provisions. A red line version of this appears on pages sixty-six through seventy of tonight's session packet, and a clean version's on pages sixty-one through sixty-five. This was discussed at a recorded work session held November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three with a section-by-section presentation by the city attorney, as well as Judge Aaron Maxwell. No changes have been made to the proposal since the presentation at the recorded work session. I'll just do a brief executive summary here. The proposal affects five sections of the code. Four within Title I, Section fourteen, where the bulk of the proposed changes are, which is our municipal court rules and rules of procedure, and one within Title V, the business regulations. This is part of a larger project. The city's legal staff has undertaken a broad review of Title I of the Montrose Municipal Code, the focus of which was to conform provisions of it to current practice at the city and/or to conform with state law, and this does both. Working meetings were held with Judge Maxwell and her staff and the legal department on August ninth, October eighteenth, and October twenty-fifth, in advance of bringing this proposal before the council tonight. I would not go through a section-by-section analysis, as that's already been done. I think I'll just, if I may, just give some highlights and then maybe take some clarification questions. The biggest proposal, suppose add, is to take one section already existing of state code, of our code, one fourteen four D. That has within it one sentence that manages to cross-reference four different state statutes. It's an oblique reference. It's also procedural reference. It's misplaced, and staff believes it's better placed within the procedure section. So part of this is to strike that language and move those concepts and build them out into the procedure section of the municipal court, one fourteen two. That's the biggest section of this on the red line. That appears on page sixty-seven, bleeding over into sixty-eight, literally bleeding over because it's mostly text, a new text. But that's, it builds out those concepts of respective responsibilities and obligations for the taking of a plea discussion or doing plea discussions and then taking of plea agreements, the roles of the court, and then the roles of the parties as well. This does conform to those cross-reference state law provisions that I mentioned earlier. Those are, the concepts are built out to where they're separated, and they make a little bit more sense, candidly, as they're expressed here. It also intends to mirror the process that we, A, are following in municipal court, and B, is consistent with state law principles. There's an additional section in there about, it's sub E, where that's intended to basically bring into our code a gap filler position, rule out of the criminal code for the state system, where there's no procedure specifically prescribed. The Colorado Rules of Municipal Court procedures leave a lot to be desired. They leave a lot of gaps. They're not comprehensive, so this would allow the court to, with notice, import other provisions where applicable, where appropriate in the case, to address the particular issue. The other big piece of this is addressed in Section four, the enforcement of fines. State laws changed quite a bit since that time. This code reflects kind of an older understanding of what is CRS eighteen one point three seven oh two monetary payments and due process required. There's additional process pieces with this, so I've, some of that language is struck in that it also refers to the current or practices that, and the findings that have to be made about undue hardship and without making a good faith effort to comply that have to be made in order for more punitive sanctions to occur for non-payment of fines. The typical process that's followed in Montrose Municipal Court is also reflected in the first edit for that section, may be sent to a collection agency of the court selection for enforcement of judgment. That's the typical process that we handle ninety-nine percent of probably our municipal court cases where you have an outstanding judgment. The last piece of this, Section five, is a continuation of kind of the sentencing reform thing that this department's been doing, where we're trying to strike kind of standalone penalty provisions strewn throughout the code and to have that be treated with a cross-reference to MC one dash two dash three. That's intended for kind of ease when if council needs, or future councils want to address the penalty sections, they have to address two sections instead of twelve or thirteen strewn throughout the code. And with that, I'll take any specific questions.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions or comments? Thanks for the work. I know we have asked the legal department to work on our city codes and to make sure that the cross-references are correct and where they can be more streamlined, and thank you very much for continuing to do that work. It's, I think, a little bit tedious, but it's really improving and making our code better. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Is there any public, or actually, it looks like it's a hearing, which just means I banged the gavel, apparently. Is there any public comment for the hearing? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to close the hearing and would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance twenty-six fifty-two on the first reading as presented. Second.
While those are tabulating, I'll actually say hearings are required, public comment are not, but we do do public comment on every agenda item when we're voting. So the difference, besides the gavel, between a hearing and public comment is the hearing's required, and the public comment is just our current policies and practices. Okay, that passes a five zero. Moving on to the next item is item thirteen, Ordinance twenty-six forty-six. This is a second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance amending Section eleven dash seven dash twelve of the Official Code of the City of Montrose concerning the zoning of new additions to the city and rezoning parcels already in the city limits. And I will turn this over to our planning manager, Jace Hopwell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is second reading, so I will keep this one a bit more brief than the last presentation. I'll just give a quick summary here. So the item I have in front of you is a code amendment to Section eleven dash seven dash twelve of the land development regulations related to rezoning and the zoning of additions. Summary of this proposal was discussed at the October sixteenth work session and then went to first reading last week and was passed or recommended with a unanimous vote of approval there. The primary purpose of this code amendment is really to clear up some code language so it matches exactly with our current processes. There's no changes to the process being proposed, so I just want to make that pretty clear here. The code modifications just add clarity to the process and eliminate any ambiguity that exists related to the rules of planning, commission, and city council for rezones and initial zonings of annexations. So no changes from when this was last heard, so with that, I'll conclude and open it up to any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions? Okay, and as Mr. Hopwell said, this is the second time we've heard this, because to pass an ordinance, city council will read it and vote twice. So if anyone wants more information, they can go back to the first reading, and if they want even more information, they can go back to the previous work session when we would have discussed it and had questions back and forth. So I will hold a hearing for public comment as required. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance twenty-six forty-six on second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. And thank you also to the planning department for doing the same work on our codes of making them clear and consistent and easier, and thank you. Ed, can you make sure you hit save on your vote?
I'm trying to get to that point.
And that passes unanimously. So that allows us to move on to the next item, and this is council consideration of Ordinance twenty-six forty-seven. This is second reading of an ordinance for the annexation of the Osprey addition. And again, I'll ask our planning department, this time William Reese, to remind us all about this item.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. Given that we've talked about this annexation application pretty extensively, I'll be pretty brief here, but this does serve as the second reading of the annexation and zoning ordinances, which would formally approve the annexation application itself. There would still be some administrative steps to officially record the annexation, but this serves as the final meeting tonight. Nothing about the application has changed since the first reading. The Osprey addition is approximately nine point five three acres and does fall within the city's urban growth boundary, water, and sewer service areas. I do have a map just to show. That can be switched over. But the proposal would include P public district zoning in the western portion of the property, which would ultimately be planned for the all-points transit facility, as you can see on this map here. That area is bordered by existing D two highway commercial district, R two low-density, and R four high-density district, and the eastern portion would be zoned R four high-density district. This here is a zoning exhibit that shows the exact meets and bounds legal description of where the zoning would be delineated. There would also be a minor subdivision which would match these bounds. There would also be a minor subdivision which would match these boundaries exactly. This is the actual annexation plat. As you can see, 100% of the property does border existing city limits, so this annexation would also eliminate an existing enclave. According to our future land use map, this area is designated as residential mixed density low, which indicates that the area is appropriate for single-family development as well as some attached duplexes or townhomes. It is also within Growth Area 1, which indicates proximity to existing infrastructure and represents the most cost-effective areas for the city to grow. Growth Area 1 does primarily consist of enclaves ripe for infill development. Infill is referred to in our comprehensive plan, and we should strike to promote higher density development in infill sites, and this would also help to accomplish a variety of our housing goals, namely the R4 portion to the east. Staff does find that the annexation application is in order and that the proposal complies with the public health, safety, and welfare annexation policy and the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission did make a unanimous approval of the recommended zoning. Staff recommends approval of ordinances 2647 and 2648 on second reading as presented.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions either about the annexation or the zoning? We'll take them as separate votes, but does anyone have questions about either one? Okay, so we'll do two different hearings and two different votes because that's how we do this. So, on ordinance 2647, which is the annexation piece, I'll open a hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2647 on second reading as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously, which takes us to the next part, which is ordinance 2648. And this is consideration of the zoning for the Osprey addition, and that would provide the zoning as, part of it is P public district, and then another part as R4 high-density district and R3A medium-high-density district. And I'll hold a hearing. Is there any public comment on the zoning of this newly annexed property? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
I move to adopt ordinance 2648 on second reading as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously, and that moves us along to items 16 and 17, which is the next piece of property that we are going to have second readings for both the annexation and then the zoning. So, the first one is ordinance 2649. This is an ordinance on second reading for the annexation of the Bluff Harbor Lot Addition. And then we will have ordinance 2650 on second reading, which will be consideration of an ordinance providing for the rezoning of the Bluff Harbor Lot Addition as MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District. We will do two separate votes like we just did, and in both cases, hold a required hearing before each vote, but I'll turn it back over to our planner, William Reese, to refresh us on these.
Thank you again. We have also talked about this one pretty extensively as well, so I'll also be brief on this one. Same points apply to the annexation schedule. This is a 0.72 acre annexation located along Juniper Road, and this is within the city's urban growth boundary and sewer service area, but it is within the Monocan Water Service Area. The property is surrounded on three sides by city limits. All of this is zoned MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District, which provides a suitable environment for both mobile and stick-built homes. The applicant has requested MHR to match the surrounding zoning. Here is the annexation plat, which shows the, that the property is eligible for annexation according to the state's requirements. Our future land use map does indicate that this is designated as employment center, which would theoretically suggest commercial or industrial uses, though the surrounding area is all residential, so the proposal of a residential zoning district is appropriate. This is found within Growth Area 1, again suggesting cost-efficient areas to annex and grow the city. The property is eligible for annexation and the application is in order. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare and the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission did also unanimously recommend the MHR zoning designation, and staff recommends approval of ordinances 2649 and 2650. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, we have talked about this extensively since we did have a first reading, and prior to that, we had a work session about it. So, I'll officially open a hearing for the annexation portion. Is there anyone here wishing to speak about the annexation? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 2649 on second reading as presented.
Second.
And the annexation passes unanimously, which allows us to move on and forward to the zoning of the just annexed parcel. I'll hold a hearing on the zoning as well. Is there any public comment for the zoning of this parcel? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
Madam, I move to adopt ordinance 2650 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next item, 18. This is the Phase 2 Land Development Regulations Code Update Service Agreement. This is council consideration of a professional services contract with Plan Tools LLC in the amount of $105,000 for Phase 2 code updates specific to Title 11 of the Montrose Municipal Code. And I'll turn this over to planning manager, Jace Hopwell.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor, and good evening. Once again, we're looking at kind of more code amendments here, but this is directly pertinent to a service agreement. And again, as you reflected, it's a service agreement between Plan Tools LLC and the City of Montrose that's being proposed. The agreement is not to exceed $105,000 and is specific to Phase 2 code updates, as we classify them at least, of Title 11 of the Montrose Municipal Code. And again, that's the Land Development Regulations. This contracted work is expected to run through the end of 2024, so it'll be about a year-long process as we anticipate it. This has been brought up a few times in the past, including at last week's work session, where I gave a fairly thorough presentation. Also in the packet, you have the drafted contract as well as a lot of supplemental information there, so I'll keep it rather high-level this evening. As you're all aware, Plan Tools LLC did perform planning services back in 2022 and 2023, this year, earlier this year, related to code consolidation efforts. Those were referred to as the Phase 1 code updates of the Land Development Regulations. So, this consolidation effort was adopted back in April of 2023, and there were very few substantial or substantive changes that were made. The primary purpose was really a consolidation effort to modernize, consolidate into one new title, and eliminate redundancies. With those consolidation efforts now complete, it's time to jump into some more substantial code updates and code amendments. So, Phase 2, as we're referring to it as, will consist of more substantial updates that eliminate ambiguity that exists in the code. You saw one of those code amendments come tonight, and you'll likely see those in the future, just on an individual basis by staff. But this will be a kind of a real broader brush overall, and really what the goal is is to bring the code in line with the new comprehensive plan. Also, it'll include several code updates specific to housing, and again, we've discussed this quite a bit in the past as well, so that's just also something to keep in mind. All in all, as we view it, this is really a continuation of a major code update process. You know, we have a somewhat dated code, and we're looking to bring it into kind of the new era here, and we'll have more follow-up work sessions as we dial in some of these code amendments. This is really the contract to start the entire process, as we view it. One thing to also mention is the service agreement is to not exceed $105,000. Some of this funding will actually be grant-funded, so we do have a grant through DOLA specific to housing, and some of that will apply to this service agreement as it moves forward. So, with that, staff does recommend approval of the agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this? We did talk about it at the work session. Okay, I will accept any public comment before council votes. I don't see any, so would accept a motion from council.
Madam Mayor, I move to award a professional services contract to Plan Tools LLC in the amount of $105,000 for Phase 2 code updates specific to Title 11 of the Montrose Municipal Code as presented.
I'll second that.
Missing somebody?
It's not showing vote.
Huh. I voted yes.
Okay.
There it is.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. I think we are all looking forward to some good deep dive into our land use code. Thank you. Okay, next item, 19, is the Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout Construction Contract. I know our community is really excited about this. This is council consideration of $3,209,461.38 in expenditures for the construction of the Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout Project. This includes the award of a construction contract to Old Castle Southwest Group, doing business as United Companies, in the amount of $3,078,461.38, a survey and engineering support contract to Delmont Consultants, in the amount of $111,000, and up to $20,000 in expenditures to Delmont, I'm sorry, to Delta Montrose Electric Association for street lighting within the project. And I will turn this over to our city engineer, Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and I think we'll pull up the drawings here too. So, no changes since work session, so I'll keep it somewhat brief. We've done a lot of studies on the Hillcrest Corridor, even some recent traffic studies for some developments that have identified that we're just about there and ready for construction of the roundabout at Niagara and Hillcrest, which is the last of the three along the Hillcrest Corridor. And for anybody who's driven it, the volumes are definitely approaching capacity during peak hour, so we're excited to see this one going. We've been working on the design and acquisitions over the last year and a half or so, and put the product out to bid and are now ready to award. You saw we had a pretty tight bid there, so there's five bidders we received. The low bid was Old Castle at the $3,078,000. They've done some, they did the Hill Street Extension for us, the Move Mo project last year, the Burt Street Bridge replacement last year. They've been, they've been doing great, so very easy to recommend award to them, a very qualified contractor for this type of work. In addition to that, the other two contracts we award, are not contracts, but one is a contract for support, so we hire the survey work directly just so we can kind of keep a level of quality control on, but in continuity between design and construction. And then again, the DMBA, we just pay for the streetlights directly instead of writing that through the contractor just to mark it up. So, that's how you get to the total presented there. The product itself will likely start in, might see some shoulder work over the next couple of months. This is a overview of the footprint here on this drawing included in the packet. But once they start in earnest, the next picture here is all the utility work that needs to be done within the roundabout, and as you can see, it's a pretty large rat's nest of utilities, so there's really no way to keep the intersection open and do that work, especially considering that large purple line there is four foot in diameter and about 15 feet deep. So, it's a pretty substantial replacement there. That's this one here that runs through, and this is where we actually had that collapse. So, we got every inch.
Is that why we haven't finished that collapsed storm drain, because we're waiting for this?
Yep, yep. So, the collapse was bad enough that it, the only way to fix it was full replacement, and we kind of patched it together to hobble along until this project starts. So, you know that infrastructure is probably 70-plus years old, so we got, it owes us nothing. We got every day of life out of it and are now ready to replace it. But it'll have, you know, utility relocations, undergrounding of power, water, sewer, storm. The sanitary sewer line is running down to Mesa, which lines up with a previous project to upsize trunk lines on Mesa about six or seven years ago. Waterline replacements, all these kind of things. We, roundabouts, they go for a long run. We don't ever want to dig up within the roundabout, and so we properly size and upsize and replace any aged infrastructure within its footprint as part of the project. That's probably two-thirds of the work is underground on this job. The project will also include water service and electrical services out to the middle so that those can be, have, be planted and lit in the holidays and things like the other, the other roundabouts. Common misconception on the landscaping, so we do want the landscaping to be tall. I had someone ask me about that this, I was actually yesterday. The intent on roundabouts is to kind of keep your focus on where you need to yield, which is to your left as you approach. You don't want to be, kind of get bogged down by cars on the other quadrants of the roundabout that don't affect you. And so, that's part of the design element, is that that landscaping is a little taller. We hear about that a lot, so. So, you'll see that here. As far as the work itself, when it's closed, there'll, the intersection itself will be fully closed. The detour routes will take people out to the next minor arterial kind of belt, which in this case is Townsend Pavilion, Oak Grove, out to 6700 Road and up to Sunnyside Road. The 6700 extension is now open, which will also help. It's not a formal part of that detour route because it's, you know, it's more than one tier out, but we will, will help take some pressures off of the remainder of Hillcrest instead of routing them right back to Hillcrest and overloading those other intersections. So, we will work, you know, to try and keep short-cutting down the neighborhoods. That's always a tendency of people to take the low road and go through the middle, so that stuff, we work with additional signage and barricades and police enforcement to try and discourage that as best we can while still leaving access open for the residents and emergency vehicles. The budget itself, the budget amount was 2.4 million in rough math. That includes general fund, water, and sewer. So, that puts us about 800,000 over the budget. We were pretty conservative in our budgeting this year. The market continues to outpace our budgeting. We're just seeing elevated challenges within the construction industry, really high demand regionally. There's a lot of work going on, and there's not a lot of people to do it, and so that's being reflected in the prices. They're still struggling with labor and materials and all that as well, so there's just a lot of risk within the industry still. And that being said, we were combined between the 6700 Road and 2023 Move Mo contractors treatment. It's about 700,000 trending under the contracted amount, so kind of in net, those dollars are there. That's where budget supplements come in, if necessary, at the end of 2024. So, when Shani was talking about how we see those on a case-by-case basis, this is an example of that. So, I'm comfortable that the funds are there, and we're comfortable that it was a good bid, and if we were to rebid it or wait, it would only likely go up from what we're seeing in the market, so I feel like it's a good time to do the project. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Would you tell us when, again, the projected closing date of the intersection and the reopening date?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the way the contract is written is they have 170 calendar days from the day they close it to get it reopened in all directions. Our talks with the contractor, it's likely they'll probably start sometime in mid to late February with that closure, and that would put them opening late summer. The drop dead date, so even if they started their opening later, they can't leave it open past when school starts in the fall. So, kind of in general terms, all should be open before school in the fall, so we don't impact two school seasons, only one, is the intent there.
Thank you. Scott, how would you compare the diameter of this roundabout to the others we have on Hillcrest?
It's larger than Sunnyside, a little bit smaller than Miami.
Any other questions for Scott or for Delmont, right? Is that? No? Okay. Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, then I would accept public comment on this. Anyone from the public wanting, fantastic, come on forward. Please introduce yourself and tell us at least what part of the city you live in. That's usually helpful. That's usually helpful.
Yeah, you bet. My name is Ryan Sedgley, and I actually live on South 12th, right there at Sunnyside, and so this will affect my wife and I there. We already have a lot of traffic, noise and speeders coming through that, through our road, and I would just ask that as this construction project happens in general, that consider ways to help slow traffic or enforce speed limits on our street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I know you were looking at the engineer, but the chief of police is also taking notes because the engineer sets up the closure on the police deal with the ramifications. So thank you. We, that is a question that came up at our work session, if you want to go back and listen to a longer answer, but we're aware of traffic problems that are caused by construction, and we work to try and mitigate those to the neighbors. Thank you very much. Okay. Then I think we could go ahead with a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve $3,900, or $209,461.38 in expenditures for the construction of the Niagara Hill Crest Roundabout Project as presented.
Second. Thank you. Please vote. And that was our last action item, meaning something we're going to vote on, but the rest of our council meeting will conclude with staff reports about, we have two items under staff reports tonight, a sales use and excise tax report, followed by the third-quarter budget review. And those are, our finance director, Shanie Wittenberg, is going to take us through those numbers.
Hello again, and I think my screen is going to share, maybe. Oh, there we go. All right. Not sure how to get rid of some of that stuff, but anyway. This is the sales and use tax report, and excise tax collection report for August. Oh my goodness, I found a typo. It's for September of 2023. Sorry about that. Presented to you tonight. The general fund sales and use taxes collected at 3% September compared to September of 2022. Retail sales taxes are up 8.2%. Construction use taxes down 73.2%. Use and auto use taxes down 22.8%. Total collections up 3.6% or a positive budget variance of 13%. Year-to-date for the general fund, retail sales taxes at 7.8% or approximately $1.35 million. Construction use tax down 66.7% or $580,000. Use and auto use tax down 0.9% or $11,000. Total collections up 3.9% or about $800,000. Budget variance is 13.4% or $2.37 million more has been collected than we anticipated. Public safety sales and use tax, in January of 2020, we started collecting 0.58%. And so the public safety fund, September compared to September of 2022, retail sales taxes up 8.6%. Construction use tax up 247.3%. Use and auto use tax down 22.8% with total collections up 14.5%. A positive budget variance for the public safety fund of 22%. Year-to-date compared to year-to-date in 2022, retail sales taxes up 7.6% or $253,000. Construction use tax up 9.1% or $21,000. Use and auto use tax down 0.9% or $2,000 with total collections up 7.2% or about $272,000. Positive budget variance there of 14.4% or about $508,000. Montrose Recreation District, back in, it's almost been 10 years, but back in June of 2014, we began collecting 0.3%, which helps them to keep up with their facility there on Woodgate Road. In September, we collected $267,000 or 14.5% more than we did in September of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected just over $2 million or 7.2% more, which is about $140,000. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds 0.9%, while restaurant excise tax adds 0.8%. In September compared to September of 2022, hotel excise taxes at 22.8%. Restaurant excise tax is at 9% with total collections up 12.1% and a positive budget variance there of 40.3%. Year-to-date compared to year-to-date of 2022, hotel excise taxes up 22.8% or about $30,000. Restaurant excise taxes up 9% or $41,000. Total collections up 12.1% or about $71,000. Budget variance there of positive 40.3 or just about $200,000. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that they voted to give up way back in 1990. In September, we collected $61,000 or 4.9% more than we did in September of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected almost $500,000, 7% more than year-to-date 2022, which equates to about $32,000. And with that, I will take any questions you might have.
Just a quick point of clarification. Somebody asked me the other day about what we spend that REC district money on, and I clarified to them that it's a pass-through. That is not money that we collect or use. That goes straight to the REC district.
Correct.
Okay. Doesn't look like there's any other questions, so do you want to go over the third-quarter budget review?
Sure. I don't necessarily have a PowerPoint for this. It is in your packet. And let me get to my, anyway. There's a memo in your packet that talks through all the major funds, and year-to-date, we don't see any concerns with those funds. That's what this report is for, for you all. Every quarter, we look at that. There's some projects listed there. I've given you a little bit of an update, as much as the finance director knows the update. But other than that, I'll take any questions you might have or concerns.
Does anyone have any questions on the quarterly budget report that was included in our packet? Okay. And our packet is available to anyone, and it's on the city's website under our meeting portal. So when we say something's in our packet, it's there for everyone to see as well. Thank you very much. Are there any other staff reports that were on the agenda, Chief Hall?
Thanks, Madam Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to give you all an update and the public an update today. Our new emergency manager, Paul Eller, hosted a continuity of operations planning, kind of introduction training, and I thought it was very good. We had a lot of very productive conversations. I think we're pretty good as a city, especially coming through COVID, but we need to formalize a lot of those processes that we learned, honestly, on the fly during that time. But I really appreciate City Council, the City Manager's Office, and all of the departments that were represented today for embracing this. Like I said, a lot of good conversations and looking forward to identifying essential functions here in the beginning of the year and moving forward with the process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff members have anything that council needs an update about? Okay. Seeing none, I'd ask council, does anyone on council have any comments they want to make before we adjourn?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the city has a number of really great holiday events coming up. On November 24th, we have the tree lighting. On December 2nd, we have our Parade of Lights downtown and Santa's Cabin. So if anybody in our public would like to come and meet Santa and sit on his lap, that you have that opportunity, except for some of our bigger people, we might not want to do that. But it's going to be a great time, and it's always a lot of fun in our city. And yeah, I'm looking at you, Blake. But it's a great time, and we always have such a really fun time. There's a lot of music, a lot of merriment in town. Also, we have our Montrose Bucks Sale. All this information is available on our DART website, and I believe that there's been a lot of social media posts about it as well.
And if you aren't on social media, but you want to go to the website to find out more, I'm looking at the DART website. I don't see that Christmas information. Does anyone on staff know exactly where we can point folks who might not be on social media if they want to look it up?
Currently, if the public goes to citiofmontrose.org and just scrolls down a little bit, there's a press release, "City to Host Holly-Jolly Holiday Season." And that press release has all of the information that Mr. Frank just mentioned, so I think that's the easiest and best place to go.
Perfect. Thank you. And I think we'll see some ads in our newspaper as well, our daily print edition. We'll see ads in that as well for people who want the information that way. Or anyone can always call City Hall and say, hey, I heard something. When is that parade happening? And our great customer service reps can give them the information as well. And to sign up for the parade, right. Entries need to sign up if they want to participate. Your organization wants to have a float of the parade, they do need to sign up. Anything else from council?
I'd just like to thank staff as we're getting to the end of the budget, the amount of work that everyone is involved in. I think it covers just about every employee we have in one aspect or another, so thank you very much for bringing that together.
I just want to comment on the budget, just like he did. There's, when it comes to the budget and the supplementary budget, there are funds that show up on that budget that are actual grants that we have to account for whether we spend them or not. And so I just realized that along the conversation with the manager and the finance director, that sometimes when you see monies in a certain budget proposal, it also encompasses grant monies that the city uses for the betterment.
Excellent point. Any other comments from council?
I can't pass the opportunity with the other three council members, yet the mayor, to say something, so I just would like to say, since this is the last time we get together before the Thanksgiving holiday, I'd like to say I wish you all a safe and happy Thanksgiving, as well as the administration and staff, and to all the citizens of our city.
Excellent. I think I'll take that opportunity to tag on, there is a community Thanksgiving dinner happening, and I know that they are still looking for volunteers. And that happens at Friendship Hall. And so if you are looking for information on that, I think, I don't have a great place to point you, but it is a cool event that our community puts on at the county's Friendship Hall for a Thanksgiving community dinner. And so I think with that, we can wrap up for tonight. Can I please entertain a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. We're adjourned for tonight.
You got that pretty quickly.